Is he on the way?
Yeah, he's almost here.
Okay.
Oh, he's almost here, over right there.
I've been so thirsty today, I don't know what to do. How've you been?
I've been great.
Good, good.
Well, I mean, I had, I got out, and, you know, it was Saturday, just like, it's not best fishing weather, I mean, it was humid. They were killing.
No pressure.
They had...
Did you go fishing?
All my son and I, yeah, all said, yeah. All my son and I, they had big fish chasing little fish, chasing little more fish, and they were standing on each other, and they were all defending fifteen or two of the surpise. We get a grandson, and I go, get the boat off, it's running fine, we're trolling, and all of a sudden, it just taunts. So, and I fire it up, it runs for three seconds, and it goes on, so finally, I have to get towed back in after, we got out, and we figures it out, my grandson, closest he could give, was about ten minutes worth of fishing.
Oh, no. That sounds like, that sounds like my kids' charge.
That was after standing, see, you got fifty bucks on gas, and...
Sounds like you got bad gas.
We had, we had...
Hello.
And I had to go on, and I had to get a new sixer license, my grandson's old enough, we had to, but I had to get a new sixer.
I bought one of those a couple of weeks ago, my daughter was here.
Fifty dollars.
I forgot what they charge, it's pretty expensive. But, uh, I didn't buy one. I'm fishing, I went fishing for a whole day and didn't catch a thing.
Way lower than that?
It's not.
Way lower than that?
Not that big.
Whether the still...
Wait, no, Jason's supposed to be going in the door.
Thirty-one twenty-five or something, nine fifty.
Well, hurry.
And the brewer from twelve fifty to nine fifty.
Then we won't wait on it.
Ours is, or being lower, it's fifty, I don't know.
That was quick.
I held it up for you.
Yeah, I would be too, they're normally higher on everything than we are. They're normally higher on everything than we are.
I said, it says R on those two. And I keep saying, seven o'clock is the game start.
Would you call the road, please?
Present.
Here.
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 Here. Would you please stay and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item two is a consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held April 7th, 2014. Item B is receive the minutes of the regular park work meeting held March 4th, 2014. Item C is declare certain police vehicles as surplus. Item D is approve ratified claims and expenditures for FY 2013, 2014, in the amount of $3,555,336.45.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you. Thank you. We have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Mayor, just a note, on item C there, they're all listed by serial number and year model and all that in the agenda packet, the backup information, we just didn't, there was so many of them, we just didn't include them all in the language of the agenda item there.
Okay. That's on page seventeen of your package. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Crowe.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Snyder.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number three is consider approval of new job descriptions and replacements in the non-union pay table for HUD funded positions for the Assistant Planners Grant in pay range 58, Administrative Assistant, CDBG, in pay range 47, and Accountant Two in pay range 64.
Mayor, Council, we've been looking at these positions for some time now, ever since we were made, were notified that we were receiving these HUD grant funds for disaster recovery. The three positions you see here would be full-time for the disaster recovery program, and the salaries would be reimbursable from the program. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are these gonna be temporary jobs?
Well, they are not being hired on as temporary workers. The HUD program is, we have to have the money spent within five years, or 2019, and then we'll have a period of monitoring for compliance, which could be another three to five years. The thought is, is that in ten years, through attrition or just growth within the city, we could absorb these positions elsewhere in the, in the organization.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion on these items? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Snyder.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number four is consider awarding bid number 1314-010, purchase one or more CNG high compaction thirty-two cubic yard automated side loader packer bodies to Rush Truck Center in the amount of $147,450.
Mayor, Council, we went out for seal bids, received those back. Rush Truck Center is the low and best bidder at 147,450. Staff recommends approval of that bid.
Are we getting one, or?
Yes.
Just one?
I haven't put in budget. A couple.
Well, it just said here, one or more, I didn't know.
Yeah, just a minute, missed print.
Okay.
Does it be here, is it replacing, or are you just adding?
Uh, it'll be replacing.
How long have these trucks lasted?
Well, they've been lasting us about seven to eight years. The life expectancy in the business is probably between five and seven. You know, we've been getting, I've been using setup.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, thank you both. We have a motion and a second, would you call for the vote, please?
Scott Snyder.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Crowe.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Item five is consider awarding bid number 1314-006, Little River Park Playground to Playwell and Playworld, in the amount of $74,999.49.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, this is the last playground that we had replaced that was destroyed by the May twentieth tornado. We had nine playground manufacturers submit proposals. We had, as we've done in the past, a committee of park board members and city staff review the proposals. The committee's recommendation is that the best proposal was submitted by Playwell. And going along with our strategy, we're theming our playgrounds as we replace them. This will be a pirate ship themed playground, as you see in the renderings there. And the last thing is, this will be a community-built playground that, that, um, the community will help build. The timeframe that this will happen will be about mid-July, take two or three days to install it. So, by mid-July, we should have a playground at Little River. So, and, and the funds for this will come through, insurance will be reimbursed through our insurance because of the tornado. So, with that, I'll be happy to take any questions you might have.
How many people do you need for the community build out?
As many as we can get. If we have fifty to two hundred people, we can build it all in about a day. There'll be some preliminary work that we do, there's horse semen and pad and all that stuff, but we, we think we can build it in a day or two, so.
You guys have never been on one, it's really fun.
Yeah, it'll be a really neat, neat project, so. It'll be hot, but it should be dry, so we should be able to...
I know a lot of teachers that'll help out with that, so when it comes time.
Yeah. So, what, what days are we gonna build, what days are we...
We're looking at the week of July fourteenth through the nineteenth. We'll narrow that down as we get closer, when we have the material shipped to us, so.
Okay.
That's the week that we're looking at, we're targeting.
All right, sounds great.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion on this item?
The park's starting to look really, really nice out there, by the way.
Yeah.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Crowe.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Snyder.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number six is consider adoption of resolution number 79514, adopting the schedule of fees and charges by amending the occupation tax related to alcoholic beverages for brewer and distiller, effective upon approval and remaining in effect until modified, amended, or repealed, and repealing prior inconsistent fees. Do we have a motion? This is what we talked about last meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? So, if not, would you call vote?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Crowe.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Snyder.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number seven is consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held April 7th, 2014. Item B is approve and ratify claims, claims, excuse me, claims and expenditures for FY 2013 and 2014, in the amount of $602,442.57.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, any other discussion on this item? Would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Crowe.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Snyder.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item number eight is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held April 7th, 2014. Item B is approve payment of a court workers' compensation compromise settlement to Michael Dorick in the amount of $30,378.15 for claim number WC2013-04514-R, authorized placement on the property tax roll and supplement the budget accordingly. Item C, approve payment of a court, approved workers' compensation compromise settlement to Michael Doryak in the amount of $10,575 for claim number WC2013-05428-L, and authorized placement on the property tax rolls. Item D, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2013, 2014, in the amount of $131,181.53.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Snyder.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Crowe.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, items carried. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting.
Uh, would you call the road, please?
Robert Crowe.
Present.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Scott Snyder.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Mayor Cavlin.
Okay, item ten, the consent docket. Item A is to receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority meeting held March 17th, 2014.
Move to approve. Second.
Would you call the road, please?
Robert Crowe.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Snyder.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting and reconvene the city council meeting.
All right, thank you. Let the record reflect that all the members that were present before are still present. Item number eleven is new business. Item A is citizens forum for items not on the agenda. We have no one signed up, would anyone like to speak? Okay. Item B is items from the city council or trustees.
Maybe you want to, can somebody just kind of give us a brief update on, uh, heat, uh, roadway, construction, style of, or whatever?
Talking about the steel gone?
Yep, yes.
Well, we go up the north leg over twelve-three, up north, that's all been completed, and all the storm sewers in on the south portion of it, that's where the majority of the storm sewers located. And it's on the east side, and we're actually in the process of building roadway, we're headed south on twelve-three, and unless we just have an absorbent amount of equivalent weather, we should finish that up, hopefully by the end of June. And it'll free up traffic considerably when we get that east side bored out, because that's how we have a four-lane roadway, that existing roadway, and that dicker is pretty tight through there right now. But, they're on schedule.
Are you having to put storm sewer in on the other side of that road, and they're going to paralyze that?
Well, most of it's, the crossings are in, there's a little bit that will be added as we build the roadway, but it's minimal compared to most of the地区of today.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
Uh, yes, I think Mr. Edie, or you don't want to talk about that item that I was emailing you about today, for a minute or two, or do you want to just tell them briefly what's about, if they see it coming up?
You can start, and then I'll follow up.
That sounds good. Um, you guys may not be aware, but there's been a group at some of the Norman high schools protesting, or kind of picketing, with some pretty graphic information, it's an anti-abortion group, but they've been right on the sidewalks of the schools, showing pictures and handing leaflets out, well, they've been in the Moore schools now, too. So, I tried to do some research, and I contacted the Norman City Council, because they are pursuing an ordinance to handle issues like that. And, uh, so I got some information, get information, I think, and I gave it to Mr. Bernie, to Mr. Edie. And, uh, the, the things that need to be stressed are that this is not about freedom of speech, it's about giving the children a place to go to school, in a, in a safe environment, and, um, it looks like it's been upheld by some, by courts, and it seems pretty reasonable, but I'll let Mr. Edie talk about it, but that, that's what it's about, is to keep groups from, any group, no matter who they are, just from being right next to a school, when kids are getting in and out of school, so.
From what we understand, it's a national organization, anti-abortion group, that has a Norman or Oklahoma chapter, and I guess they've, have been concentrating in Norman on schools and on clinic down there at Lake. You may have read in the paper recently, or the news, that the Norman School Board asked the city of Norman if there's anything they could do, or if there's an ordinance that could be passed to keep the protesters back some from the school. Norman thinks they have got some, um, a Supreme Court ruling, I believe, and some other court cases that may allow them to do it. They're still researching it, but what they're looking at is an ordinance that would prohibit these people from being within a hundred and fifty feet of the points of ingress and egress from a school. Um, and so, I've got the information from Robert and the city of Norman, that with what they're doing, we can kind of see what they do and, and follow something similar to that, if that's what you desire, but, um, it very well also could be challenged.
I like the idea, Mr. Edie, I think it's a great idea, but, uh, if we did that, I mean, obviously, it would only affect the schools in our city limits, and with the school district going outside our city limits, would it just kind of push these people to those schools? I mean, I would think that it would probably...
I, I guess it would be possible, yeah.
So, I just, I don't know.
I kind of hope that if Norman does this, Annley do it, and they feel pretty confident that it would withstand any, you know, challenge, apparently, they, they signed a couple of court cases, and it's been upheld, but I would kind of hope that if Norman did it, Annley did it, hopefully kind of go up the, you know, the, the interstate there, and Oklahoma City might follow through and maybe do it too, I would hope, so. But I just, you know, it'd be nice to be able to keep groups like the cult that came out a few weeks ago, and, and, you know, groups that are kind of harassing, and, you know, there's a lot of places you can protest, there's no reason to be right outside a school with little kids, you know, so.
I talked to the...
Are they required to have permits?
Well, we actually had a, a difference of opinion internally on that today, with some of our, um, folks, but, um, the way the ordinance read it, basically, it says they have to have a permit if they're interfering with the public's right to use the public property, basically, if they're interfering with the right to use the sidewalk, basically. Um, a lot of cities don't even require that kind of a permit. We use, um, that permit process for the Westboro group, and we, they definitely interfere with the right to use the roadway, the sidewalk, and all that, whenever there's all the counter protesters and so forth. There's some discussion as to whether just a couple of, three or four folks out on the sidewalk would be interfering with your right to use a sidewalk, but be that as it may, that's what our current ordinance says. If we do something like Norman is proposing, then it would be a little firmer with regard to what they have to do.
And one thing you have to kind of keep in mind, that you may not know, is that, that these people know their rights better than any of us do. They are actually wearing cameras, and they have microphones on them, so as they're talking to police officers or anyone else, it's completely filmed, and they're posting all this on YouTube, and so it's, it's a pretty dicey deal, and it's one of those deals you probably would rather not even have to deal with, but, you know, it'd be nice to have a good, solid ordinance out there that just handles it, you know.
The position we're gonna take now is that we're gonna suggest to them, if they come back, that, hey, you need to go to city hall and get a permit. Our permitting process is if they come in and do it, they can get a permit, so it, in the end, it doesn't get, get us anywhere other than we know who they are, and when they might show up. But other than that, if, if you want to look at something to what Norman is doing, or others may have tried to do, we can do that.
But if they operate, operate outside the limitations of that permit, then they're in violation, so they could be, technically, could they not be arrested for that?
In terms of the, and the, our current ordinance, or the proposed ordinance we would be talking about?
Current ordinance.
Well, they could be. Um, we don't really want to get into a big flap with this kind of, with these kinds of folks, we'd probably just tell them to move along, um, and not arrest them, but...
That's a thought.
I understand.
And, and that's the tough, the tough part is, because they know to stand on the sidewalk and not block the way you walk, you know, where you're walking. You know, ask you if you want their, you know, flyer that has the picture of an aborted fetus on it, you know, I mean, it's, they, they know what they're doing, you know.
What is the school policy on it?
Well, the school policy is, like Mr. Edie emailed me, um, they, they're not on the school property, they're on the sidewalk. Now, if they're on the school property, the school can take care of it, tell them to go away, but they're not on the school property, they're on the sidewalk.
We just have to be very careful, and you mentioned it already, Robert, about what we do with regard to the message versus the actions that they take, because we can't do anything that prohibits them from their free speech rights. Or we can, we perhaps can regulate where they do it at, perhaps, and maybe even when they do it, but, again, it's a, it's a fine line.
Okay. So, we're in a wait and see what Norman does otherwise?
Well, I mean, you all, tell us what you want to do.
They actually, they actually have an ordinance written up that they're proposing, they have all the research completed, and so I don't know when they're gonna go down, if they're gonna talk about it, I think we're fresh out.
Yeah, I will email you what we got from Norman, it's a, it's a pretty well-written thing by their city attorneys, that talks about the case law, um, and they had, again, they had proposed it to start with a hundred and fifty feet, all the way around the school boundaries, but they thought that might be excessive in terms of, if you look at the, and I've got maps here of all of our high schools and junior highs, if you want to look at them, with a hundred and fifty-foot radius around them, if you look at that on any given school, that's a lot of area to try, regulator to deal with. Uh, and most of the time, obviously, it's gonna be on the main roads at the entries to these schools, so.
Ray, have you got, often you looked at any of the, I mean, court rulings, or...
Yeah, I looked in...
I, I did read what Norman provided to us, and it seemed logical, so. We'll see how it goes with Norman for a couple of weeks. I always like for somebody else to get sued first.
Well, we definitely would, I think we would want to do something similar to what they do, if they take the lead on it, because it's been a problem for them for quite some time now.
That's why, that's why I...
I agree, look like you're just itching for a bite.
Yeah. No, thanks.
We don't really want to get in the middle of that issue.
I think we got enough troubles. Okay. Anything else? Anything you can say, man, here?
Uh, just one thing, Mayor, and that is, if, if it's gonna work with everybody, or most everybody's scheduled, we'd like to schedule a budget meeting, or a meeting to talk about the NPWA budget specifically for next Monday night. Monday nights always seem to be pretty good, so.
I'll be out of town, but don't let that stop me.
We'll update you.
No, 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 yeah, keep me posted.
Okay, wait a gap.
Will that work for everybody else?
Works for me.
Six, six-thirty?
Six-thirty's great.
Six-thirty, we'll do it next Monday night.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Item number twelve is executive session, section 307, title 25, Oklahoma statutes permits the public body to meet an executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It is the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following items. Item A, discuss, consider, and deem appropriate, consider taking possible action regarding pending claim by Michael Atkinson against the city of Moore, and authorization for legal counsel and staff to take action as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the city of Moore, as authorized by 25 Oklahoma statutes 307B-4. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
All right, thank you. Thank you. We have a motion in this, in a second, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Snyder.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Crowe.
Yes.
Yes, we're, we're adjourned to executive session. Put that out in a second.
I've got two things for you.
Two? Two? I didn't even bring one.